Name on?
Probably Sal. He's usually the one that calls in.
It's Richard Ross.
It's Richard Ross. Okay, I'll rename you.
It's Richard Ross. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So are we okay to go, Carol?
Yes, now you are. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll call the meeting to order. And the first item of business as always is a review of the minutes of the previous meeting. Are there any additions or corrections that people would like to add?
I make a motion. We accept the minutes as written. Mark Cady.
I'll, Bob Murphy, I'll second it.
Is anyone opposed?
No.
Thank you.
Would you do me a favor for the record? Could you list off who was actually in attendance for your planning board members? And then when you vote, you really do need to do a roll call.
Okay, so the people present are Mark Cady, Mike Steers, Bob Murphy, Mary Satell, Helen Woodhouse, Robert Tortia, and Richard Ross.
Thank you.
So now voting in favor of the minutes as written. Mark?
In favor?
Mike's in favor. Bob Murphy?
In favor.
Mary?
In favor.
Robert?
In favor.
Ellen?
Favor.
Richard?
In favor.
Thank you. So having done that, our first new business item is a petition by the Mars for a variance. And I suspect David Loaf or maybe Rob wishes to introduce or present that?
I'll let David do it.
Okay.
Hello?
Hello, David. He's on mute.
I think I'm going to go ahead.
Okay.
So, good evening all. And I'm here on behalf of Rob and Mary Mara.
Mary's beside me.
Mike, can you hear me?
So this, this matter is probably somewhat familiar to all of you. I think two months ago, we presented a, an administrative subdivision plan. Rob and Mary own two adjacent lots, one of which is improved with their dwelling. It's lot five on plat thirty-three. The other adjacent lot is unimproved. And so what the Maras intend to do with the, hopefully, your endorsement and the approval of the zoning board is to construct a small, approximately three hundred and forty-five square foot little bump out addition to their existing dwelling. The intent and use of that is to render their entire first floor as handicap accessible. Despite the fact that, that Rob and Mary look to be in terrific shape. They're in their early eighties and they're contemplating that it may be at some time in the future that, you know, their, their health and their ambulatory abilities might decline and they're looking to ensure that they have a usable first floor if their abilities to, to get around are impaired by the aging process. So this three hundred and forty-five square foot structure is a single story structure, which will include a bathroom that is handicap accessible. That's important because the current first level of their dwelling does not have a full bathroom. So that, that's something that is important and is one of the primary objectives here. So so that is the overall objective, which is, and I know that the purpose of this meeting is for the planning board to determine whether or not there is consistency with a little comprehensive plan. And so in that regard, we feel that there are some compelling favorable issues and reasons to side on the fact that there is a consistency with the comp plan. And throughout the comp plan, there is an emphasis on, you know, the elderly in town and their ability to age in place and maintain their, their residency as they become older. And so, you know, the, the obvious goal here of the Maras is consistent with that. They're thinking ahead. They're looking to ensure that they're going to be able to utilize their home and and, you know, as, as they age. And so the key elements in the comp plan that speak to that goal is policy H. H is in Howard, the number one. C is in Charles. So that is the, one of the key elements that we view as an element of consistency with the comp plan. Another is action item. H is in Howard, the number one. Point B, as in Boyd. Likewise, that provision talks about the ability and desire of the elderly residents in town to, again, be able to age in place and maintain their residency in town as that natural process happens. So also on page fifty-nine of the comp plan, you see a similar articulation of this, of this concept of aging in place. And so I do want to emphasize that, that there is this element of consistency with the comp plan in that regard. And part of the zoning application, I don't know the extent to which you have a full copy of that, but there is a, a letter in the file that was provided by a terrific organization in town called Stay at Home. And so the treasurer and chairman of the board spoke with Rob and took a look at what Rob was planning to do. And, and in that letter of April twenty-nine of twenty-twenty, after reviewing that, gave a letter of endorsement in terms of the overall goal of a handicap access, the importance of that. And so I do want to emphasize that, that is in the file and is, I, I view it an important element or evidence of consistency with the comp plan insofar as the comp plan itself talks about the importance of this terrific organization in, in its, in, in the body of that agreement. So with that in mind, I'd like to just be quiet for a bit and entertain any questions should, should there be any. I also want to point out that Don Maderos, the civil engineer and surveyor, who has assisted Rob and Mary in this project along with myself is also available to the extent that questions arise.
Well, I'll just make a couple of comments. I certainly agree with your assessment of support for senior housing and opportunities to age in place. If I look at the site plan you sent us, the addition, the proposed addition is, is going over where a current deck is. So you're eliminating the deck and the, the distance from the wetlands to the, I'm not sure the direction. I think it's north. You, you listed as forty-one point nine. It would appear to me that, that the, the deck is practically in the same corner there. So there's no, for all intent and purpose, in additional encroachment toward the wetland. And you've added property to the south in order to achieve the twenty-five foot setback, if that's correct.
Yeah, I think that's generally correct and accurate and all. To the extent that Don would like to supplement the info, I'm going to give you is, that's fine as well. So as you can see, that there, there is the, the bolded and broken line that, that does delineate the area between the actual wetlands edge and the fifty-foot DEM setback requirement. And as you can tell, because of the constraints on, on this property in terms of the pervasive wetlands, there really was a limited area that was suitable for building. And so when, obviously, the the Maras did go through DEM, they were permitted for the structure to be permitted within the fifty feet, which it generally is. But the, the, as you pointed out, most of, just about most of the proposed addition is outside of the fifty-foot area. There is a small triangular portion, as well as a small deck area that is adjacent to the existing structure that, that would be considered within the, the fifty feet. And of course, one of the tasks that, that Don is going to undertake is to secure the appropriate approval from DEM to, to proceed. But yes, I mean, the, the, if you look at the site and the location of the improvements, vis a vis the wetlands, there's a very limited area. And what has been proposed is, was intentionally, obviously, to have the additional small structure outside of the, or the primary part of it, outside of the the fifty-foot wetland area.
But is it, is it fair to say that the encroachment is, is no greater than it is presently? Presently, there's a deck in that space and you're taking the deck out.
That's, that's exactly right. Yeah. Yeah, that's exactly right.
You're not increasing any, anything.
That's an agreement. Yeah.
So that, so the, the addition is the same size as the deck?
I don't know that, but in, in the area, the critical area where the wetlands are, with regard to being within the fifty-foot setback.
Right.
That area of the new addition is, is already part of the existing building or the deck.
Huh, okay.
Everything to the south of the fifty-foot line is new, but that's all outside beyond the fifty-foot setback.
That's correct.
Mike, Don, Don Maderos, if I could just jump in and qualify that, what you're saying is absolutely true. There's also a concrete pad, an existing concrete pad, which is also within the fifty-foot DEM setback. And, and that is also within the footprint of the proposed addition. So that will be taken out as well. So to your point, that there's already an existing deck and an existing concrete pad that are already within that, that area.
Bob Murphy, so it's, it's to be understood that they're not going to have to go to DM, to the environmental people?
Don, I'll let you address that. But go ahead, Don.
I, I, I believe we will have to.
Yes, sure.
Because of the, the proposed work is within DEM's fifty-foot setback, which, which would require a permit. It would definitely be an insignificant alteration or even they might even entertain an even lesser application than that, just because of the, the minimal impact here where, where we're not really creating any new land disturbance because we're, we're, we're putting an addition over. We're removing an existing deck and an existing concrete pad to put in the addition.
Mike, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now, Sal.
All right. I, I don't know what my problem was before, but are we saying that the net effect is zero? Basically, Mr. Maderos, I guess it's for your ears.
I would, I would say so. So the existing deck, the northerly corner, the closest corner of the existing deck is about thirty-nine feet from the wetland edge. And the corresponding corner of the proposed addition is going to be about forty-one point nine feet.
Okay. Very insignificant.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll agree with that, Sal.
Yeah. And I, I just wish we had a better drawing of it, you know? And, and the, you know, the as built and the impact. Because, you know, we're, we're discussing this and a drawing would have helped us with it. While I, I fully appreciate what they're trying to do with the property, which I agree with. And I, I, as far as I'm concerned, I don't, I don't see a problem with it.
Is this construction connected to the existing house? Going to be connected? It seems to say it's separated by a deck.
No, the, so the, so the deck is existing. It's shown in dashed lines.
I can't read the, the print is so small, I can't read it at all.
Oh, you don't have the full, you don't have the full.
It's not included in our packet.
Not in our packet.
Yeah.
It's really, it's really frustrating, honestly.
Friends did not make it into their package. So they, they are looking at a reduced electronic version.
Yeah.
Okay, that explains it. Yeah, so the, the existing deck and the existing hot tub are located just off the southeast corner of the house. Those will be removed because that's where the proposed addition is going to start, at the southeast corner of the house and then extend southeasterly or away from the wetland edge.
All right, so I'm reading here. It says, it'll come in, issue and construct a small deck area between the existing dwelling and the proposed addition. So is the proposed addition standalone under the same, what manner is it connected to?
Okay, I saw, sorry. Now I understand the question and, and you're absolutely right. So, so against the existing house, where the, where the proposed addition comes up to the existing house, approximately five feet of, of that proposed addition will be a deck which will serve as an entryway into the, into and out of the addition. The, the other five or so feet of the addition, which is married, going to be married to the existing house, that will be the way to get from the existing house in and out of the addition under the, under the roof. So there's, there's a little outside deck which will have, which will not have a roof over it, but that will be for ingress and egress in and out of the addition.
So it's a totally separate structure?
No, no, it's all, it's all the same structure. So, so if you think of it, part of the structure will, will have a, a doorway which will allow you to walk from the house into the proposed addition and, and, and vice versa. The other, the other part will be a, a small twenty-five square foot deck, which will allow you to walk into, into and out of the addition from the outside.
A separate egress.
Correct. So that, that becomes more or less a portico between the two doorways.
Right. And let me, let me say something for a minute. The reason we did the portico, it would have been easier to butt the whole addition up to the house. But we put a portico in to move the addition further away from the wetlands. That's why it has that, I think it's what, six or seven feet coming out before the addition really begins.
Okay.
Great.
Yep.
Yeah, in, in that area is just, if you look at where the, the phrase enclosed porch is, if you just follow that just a little bit east to the top of the plan, you'll see that, that five or six foot area there that, that Rob is referring to, which is actually connected to the, to the structure, to the existing structure.
I'm, I'm, I'm going along with what Mike, evidently you have a full, full-size set of drawings.
Well, I thought I said everybody an electronic copy of the full plan from
Yeah, you did.
That Don did this morning.
Yeah.
It's hard to see. It's just hard.
Yeah, it's just hard. Very, very difficult. But I, I understand the concept and what you're trying to get done. And I guess I don't have any more questions from the applicant or from Mr. Lo.
Prepare to make a motion if there are no other questions.
Right ahead.
Before you do, are, are both items taken together? Or like the, or are these two lots taken separately or how is that? How are we looking at that? One's here, one's looking for relief as well. The next one's looking for relief from frontage?
Don, Don Maderos, I can answer.
Together.
I could answer that. So lot five is the small lot in the front, which is the, the subject of the existing house and the proposed addition. And so we're asking for a variance for lot five for the, for the addition setback to wetlands being less than a hundred feet, as we just talked about. Lot six is the large lot in the back, which has a forty-foot strip of land from grain jav for access, which runs along the south side of lot five. We're asking to reduce the, the lot frontage of lot six. And we're asking for a lot width variance because we believe the lot width is measured within that forty-foot strip.
Is that non-conforming pre-existing right now?
Yes. Yes.
By dimension?
Pre-existing, non-conforming.
And we're going to make it less conforming?
As well as lot five is pre-existing, non-conforming as well by area. Lot six is pre-existing, non-conforming by frontage and lot width.
Well, it's, is lot, is the lot without the dwelling, the lot without the dwelling, is that going to be utilized as a separate lot?
I'll, I'll let Rob answer that question.
It, it is a separate lot. It's, there's a four and a half acre parcel in back of our house going east. But the entrance is along the southern wall of our property. So basically, in order for us to have a setback for the addition, we're annexing twelve feet of the forty-foot laneway that goes in. It's not a right away. It's a laneway. It's attached, you know?
Yeah.
E to the re, to, so that we have the addition on.
Okay.
And have the setback.
So you're not looking for, you're not looking for relief from the size of the lot? You're looking from release for, for the frontage?
Right, which has, it has low frontage now. Both lots have low frontage, so we're making one lot have less frontage and the other lot have more frontage.
Okay.
So is that one that we're making less frontage of buildable lot right now?
It's, it's a lane way into two buildable lots.
Right, and the buildable lot doesn't have the frontage it needs to be built.
Today, right.
Even though.
And we're, and we're making that less frontage.
Yes.
That future to build on that lot. We're, we're taking a non-conforming lot by, I guess, dimension and making it even more non-conforming. Is that what we're doing?
That's correct. Frontage and lot width. And at, at the same time, we're taking lot five, which is pre-existing, non-conforming by lot area, and we're making it bigger.
So you'll wind up with lot six being a non-conforming lot?
Well, it already is.
It already is.
Yep.
Why didn't, why, why didn't you just combine the two lots?
For obvious reasons.
Yeah, because the, the lots in the back are worth more than our house.
I, I just don't know if we're making it more non-conforming if that's.
I think I, I, I've got the concept here. What we've got is two lots that are non-conforming by virtue of setback or frontage. One, we're going to make more conforming by adding twelve feet, thereby making the other one stay the same because the size of that lot is still conforming. It's just the frontage we're changing on that lot.
The width isn't.
Yeah, the width isn't. What I'm talking about is it's over the acreage required, so it's not, it's not non-conforming in acreage.
Correct. That's correct, Sal.
All right, so we're only making, actually what we're doing is we're adding to one lot, making it larger. And they're still both non-conforming. But the only thing, we're not making it more non-conforming by taking the twelve feet from it because it's got enough size. We're just making it non-conforming we're adding to the non-conformance by virtue of the, the, the frontage.
So, so why is it necessary to make one?
Because lot six is conforming. It, it will be a flag lot, which you can go in the hundred feet and get you one seventy-five by one seventy-five. So that means that lot six could be conforming as a flag lot.
Correct. It could be conforming as is. Is that what you're saying, Mark?
As, after this is done.
After, with just the twenty-eight feet?
Right, because all you need is, for a flag lot is a twenty-four foot wide access. And as long as you can go back one hundred feet and get a one seventy-five by one seventy-five, it means it's now conforming.
All right.
Is that all dry back there?
Absolutely. Yeah, there, there are no wetlands on, on lot six. And I guess to Mark's, to Mark's point, lot six as it exists today with its forty-foot strip, you could do a one-time only of lot six today and, and make it into two lots using that strip of land. We know for a one-time only, we don't need forty feet. We only need twenty-four.
Yeah, full access.
So we're taking some, some, some land away, some land of the width of the strip away, but it's still going to be twenty-eight feet wide, which would still meet the one-time only width requirement. And, and the other aspect of the variances that Sal pointed out is that lot five, as we know, is pre-existing, non-conforming by area. And it also is non-conforming by setback to the existing house. So we're, we're making the non-conformity of the setback go away. So we're making that conform and we are increasing the size of lot five. So we're reducing its non-conformity by area.
So it's a plus plus?
I think so, yeah.
So lot six i- is okay by area, but on the laneway, it's not okay by frontage. Is that the deal?
Yeah, because that, that predates, predates zoning. So it's a, it's a grandfathered lot that has forty feet of frontage, forty-foot access strip.
So it still remains a buildable lot when this is all done?
Absolutely. Like I said, we could, we could one-time only in turn lot six into two lots as it exists today. And, and should the variance be granted to decrease the frontage and lot width, we'd still be able to one-time only it into two lots. So it's definitely viable, viable as it exists today. And it's viable should the variances be granted.
Okay.
Okay, so it's all material to what we're trying to do here, but in the future, it's a whole different deal. But it's irrelevant right now.
I, in the future, I would like to, for you, Mr. Maderos, I would like to see a, a drawing with something like this because it would save us a lot of time.
We're going to address that later, Sal.
All right.
Because if the variance granted, we'll be coming back with an administrative subdivision before this board. So you'll definitely see the full-size plans and we can provide, we can provide.
They already approved.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. That's already been approved.
Oh, that's right. My bad. Yep. Thank you.
Okay. So, so we're at the point where Mark can make a, a motion.
Go ahead, Mark.
I'd make a motion that we send a letter to the zoning board saying that the planning board has previously approved the administrative subdivision requested by this variance and that it's contingent upon zoning approval. And the planning board feels that it meets the goals of the comp plan for H one dot A, which is housing goals. It meets H dot C, which is age and place. And it also meets L U one dash A, which goals are to assist stay in town for the elderly.
I'll second that motion.
Amy?
If I, I'm sorry, David, David. Thank, thank you for that, Mark. I'd like to speak to Rob, who's on the line or who's available to us. Rob, what Mark has just indicated was that the the approval would be contingent on, well, actually, we've, we've already approved. Mark, I just want to make sure I fully understand what you had just indicated in terms of the contingent element. So you've already approved the, the administrative. The the administrative subdivision plan.
Correct. But we gave it we gave it 180 day length for approval. Before recording because of zoning. So basically, it's contingent on zoning. If zoning doesn't approve it, then you'll never submit the final plan and it will go away.
Yeah, and I think that when we did approve it, I I thought I had mentioned that we. Though I think practically speaking, what you're saying is correct. I'm not. I think I had made the made the statement that we didn't want to have to come back in the event that. That Rob wanted to proceed with the administrative approval in the event that zoning was denied.
You don't have to. Right.
Okay, so I guess I was a little bit confused by the the contingent element and how that impacted what was. Okay.
I think I think Mark approved a contingency from his motion.
Okay. Terrific. Okay, thank you. Sorry if I was a little slow on the uptake on that, but I just want to make sure that that. Is the case that it's not. Contingent. It's already been approved.
Does anyone have any further questions relative to Mark's motion?
Bob Murphy was the second.
So we'll call for a vote. Mark?
In favor?
Mike is aye. Bob?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Sal?
Aye.
And Richard?
In favor? Aye.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Mike, before you proceed, you approved the. The minutes. Before I got on on board, and I think there was something in the minutes. That. I don't know if we have to address it or not, because I had recused myself on the farrier.
Yes.
And when you change the minutes. You've got me. I believe voting yes on it. And because I had recluse myself, I don't think I can vote on it.
No, I think that's a good point. So.
So that I think you have to address that.
So I think that would require a motion to revisit the minutes.
What paragraph are we talking about, Sal?
Um, in. In the minutes for. The change of the minutes. Let me find them here. Excuse me, one minute.
That wasn't on last month. That was the month before.
That's correct, but but last month we changed them. We changed the minutes.
So it has to do with the correction of the month before?
Correct. That's correct. It's a review and approve the July 7, 2020 Planning Board Meeting Minutes. And that's the paragraph. And in that paragraph. They've got me voting in favor. Of the change. I can't vote on those minutes or the change. Because it's like I wasn't there, as Mary had noted in that same paragraph.
Right, correct.
Mike, is it okay for me to leave the meeting?
Um. Rob.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm leaving. Have a nice evening. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Take care, Bob.
Mike, I make a motion that we make an amendment to the July 7. Minutes indicating that Sal had. Not voted in favor. He had abstained for the.
Myself from the whole issue.
Right.
All right, I'll second that.
You gotta say your name, Bob, so they know who does second.
I'm sorry, Bob Murphy seconds that.
All right, so we'll take a. A vote on that. Mark?
In favor?
Mike's aye. Bob, Murphy?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
And Richard Ross?
Aye.
We're not asking you, Sal.
We'll do it again.
You're not there.
Jumped in real fast, Sal. I figured you might second it and goof it all up.
Murphy did it, I think.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Okay, so the the next item is it a. A petition for a special use permit? For Wilma Bruning on. And I don't know who would like to present this.
She is here. Hi. Oh, I am. My first time on Zoom.
Don't worry, we don't get any better.
So Wilma, would you like to? Present what you're asking for?
Okay, well, I had I had written a letter to the zoning board. And what I am looking for. I've been I've had dogs here always since I've been here. I've had German shepherds and. Recently, with the new building inspector and the new police chief and so on, they have requested that I. Apply for a kennel license. And I have in the past tried to apply, not formally, but I have asked, and I've always been told I did not need one. Because they were my own personal pets. I am not going to be bringing anyone else's dogs here. I'm not looking for any boarding. I keep all my dogs in my house. So it's really more of a. Formality is the way I'm looking at it. Just. To. Enable enable me to continue along with what I've been doing. I bought my first breeding female 14 years ago. And since then, I've bred a nice line of West German showline dogs. I compete with them. I show them. And. They're all my they're my dogs. You know, it's not I'm not going to be. Training other people's dogs here or anything like that.
Is is this is Sal Marinosi. I have a question for you.
Sure.
Is this a business or a hobby?
It's a hobby. I am considered a hobby breeder by both the AKC. I belong to a couple kennel clubs in the area. And we are I'm a hobby breeder.
All right.
I wish I could make money doing it. Wilma, this is Mary.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary. I just want to know how many animals she has.
18. I have 11 dogs right now. And what I have my breakdown is I have four aged adults between six and nine and a half years old. Three are retired from breeding after two to three litters apiece. One has never been bred. I have four young adults, which are two and a half years to four and a half years old. And they are eligible to breed at that age. I don't breed a dog before it's two years old and fully health tested. I have three youngsters. These are all females, by the way. I don't keep any male dogs here. Three youngsters, one 16 month old and two seven month olds. And I have picked them out of litters I have had here to see if. They will become breeding dogs or competition dogs. And I currently have one litter of six puppies that were whelped in July. They are six. Weeks old today and they are five are spoken for. I have a waiting list for my dogs, for my puppies. Five are spoken for out of the six, and I may hold back a female. I may not. I'm watching them grow. And deciding whether I will keep one or not.
So my my question, Wilma, Mary Satell, is I I need a clarification. What's the difference between a hobby breeding? And a regular breeding? Because I think I can't find it. You said that you have what? Two to four litters a year?
Yes.
So. I I thought it so I guess I would think that one litter a year would be a hobby breeder. Versus someone who's doing two to four. So what's the distinction between the two?
Well, the two. The a hobby breeder is that I'm not an official business. I do sell some puppies, you know, and a lot of my litters, I mean, people hear the word litter. The litter I had this spring had three puppies in it. A litter I had last year had eight. I have two before that, you know, it's not. I think lots of times a litter, people think, oh, my gosh, it's 12 or 14 puppies. I've never had that many. You know, it's. And I do breed my females, the ones that I keep for breeding. It's best if you breed them while they're young. And breed them in the course of a couple of years, and then they get retired from breeding. They get spayed. Sometimes I rehome them. And sometimes they stay. But a hobby breeder, I don't really. My books, I don't make money at this, you know, the dogs eat up the money. I did have a few litters a couple of years ago, and I bought them a new vehicle. To go to the show.
So when you so when you when you have all these dogs, I didn't drive by. I mean, I've been obviously I've been in there. You know, more than once. But I'm trying to figure out where the dogs are during the during the day. Do you have pens or?
I have some pens outside. I have four pens out front. I've had raised beds put in. With rubber matting, stall mats like you would have horses on. And on those, because little everything turns to mud here, as we all know. So I have raised beds for them. And I have four pens out front and four pens in the back that I do use sometimes. I don't usually pen them. Sometimes they eat in their pens outdoors this time of year. I do have a big, probably about three quarters of an acre fenced out front that three tend to go in during the day together. And the other ones will go out back together or divided up. They go out in small groups.
Do you crate them at night?
Yes. They are crated in my home. We have some. Large crates and some four by four crates and we, you know, one or two will be loose in the house, but the rest are all crated. And they don't. Most of the summer they spend inside in air conditioning, to be honest. They don't like to be out in the extreme heat.
I'm assuming that the whelping beds are also in in your house or are they?
Yes, I have one whelping area downstairs in the lower level. And it was an apartment, a partial apartment put in for my mother. When she lived with us. And so down there is the whelping area.
Okay.
Has a little kitchenette and. The AKC, I was surprised. Did you get a copy of everything I supplied? So you can see the AKC did an inspection here in.
January.
January last year.
So my only question, I think it would be helpful to have a site plan of sorts. So that you can understand the relationship of your property. And house to neighbors' property and house. Because the the. From the comp plan standpoint. There's two sort of two categories. One is economic development. Which certainly is. Supported for low impact, own based businesses, which. And I'm it's not clear to me whether you sell the dogs or not. And the other one. Is more of a concern for. Residents and excessive noise. And and so it's it's kind of a balance to.
It is, and I do try to be very conscious of that. I know that there have been some neighbors who are unhappy. Because when my dogs do bark, it's a big bark. They're big dogs. Usually the dogs are only outside when my husband or I are home. That's, you know, 99% of the time, and we do try and keep the barking to a minimum. We have bark collars. We use on them. I don't like using those, but I will on some of the big barkers. And there they go. They're in the house right now, so you are hearing them. I have someone coming in to bake tonight. So. I.
Have you had? This is Sal Marinosi again. Have you had? Any reaction from the neighbors or?
Oh, well. Over time, there is one neighbor who is down the road. I don't have his name in front of me. I don't know. He complains quite often. When I say often, I think it's been six times in the last two years.
When you say he's down the road, is he an adjacent property or?
No, he is not. And he's the one who has complained. And the police, I mean, I'll be honest, if this doesn't really, the police would like this. Would like me to have a kennel license because then. The way it's been explained to me very briefly was they won't have to deal with him any longer.
Well.
Because he puts in, apparently, he's a very nasty person. I don't know him. But. By the time, you know, when my dogs bark, usually it's I believe it's for a short time. I know, Robert, you live in our neighborhood. And. I know that you are very close, so I don't know whether I should ask you your opinion or not. You know, I didn't even know until five, you know, right before the meeting started, I quick printed up a sheet to see who would be here.
So I I just I do live two houses away and, you know, the dogs can at times be very. And and other people in in the neighborhood have commented to me on that. And I think the general feeling is that that has been described to me as. Yeah, the the dogs are loud. No one wants to see. Put, you know, see someone stop doing something they love or. Or or breeding, but I I don't know that I want to see the number of adults allowed double either. You know.
Right, and that was just kind of a number. It was asking me for a number, so I pulled a number out of a hat. I don't. Plan. I'm in my 60s now. I probably am keeping my last puppies in the next year. Like if I keep one from this litter. Because she'll be aging out in 10 years when I'm in my 70s. I will always have one or two dogs, but will I have the amount I have now? No. I have a couple of older ones. You know, you can't just throw them away when they're done breeding. They're my dogs.
Would would you be willing to to deal with a fixed amount of dogs?
Absolutely, as long as it includes the dogs I have right now. Like I can't go down right now from what I have. I I do have one old five and a half year old female that. I'm getting spayed. She was actually due to be spayed this week, but she came in season early, so she couldn't get spayed. And she was supposed to go to a home the end of September spayed, but now that is it'll it'll get pushed off a month or two. But she will go to a home.
Sal, the application, the application is for a maximum of 15. Yeah. In there, so.
And I have. I did. I think I also did that number because at one point I did have 15 dogs here. A couple of years.
That looked like a lot of dogs to me.
It is. It's believe me, it's way too many.
It looked like a lot of dogs. There's somebody that's not in the business.
Okay, what's that?
I said it looked like a lot of dogs for somebody who was not in the business, and I would pray to God that you wouldn't be in the business. If you're.
No, and they're not. The the most I've ever had of breeding age is four dogs. And they don't get bred all the time. You know, it's.
I don't know, Mark. Is there anything that we can do as far as the numbers?
No, no, that. No, no, that, that'd be, uh, our only function is to assess its. Uh, effect on the comp plan. That's our, you know, anything else other than that is zoning.
Um. Um, Mark was, um. I, I don't, I knew you were on the planning board and I know I was when, uh, Charles Dwelly also asked for it. And his was turned down and his was a lot less.
Yeah.
Wasn't it?
I remember.
His was, his was turned down because he was asked to build a structure and he didn't. He's since started that process and I guess he's, is going to be heard again, but.
I don't think he's, I don't think he's breeding anymore, but that's.
I don't, you know, I don't know. I know the structure is partially built in his backyard.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, I think that, um, we could address the number of dogs by saying that. Uh, it wouldn't be consistent with a comprehensive plan to have that much noise in such a tight neighborhood. Uh, and that if we reduced it, it may be, uh, what she has existing, it may be, uh, more palatable.
That's what I was thinking of, something of that nature, you know, I, I know there was 15, but that, that number just blew my mind, so I said.
It's a big number. And then, and then, and then the puppies, uh, 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 any number of puppies, uh, uh.
Increases it.
Which don't make as much, but if you don't.
Well, the puppies leave at eight to 12 weeks.
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're little babies, you know, they're.
They adult dogs or, you know, something like that. I don't know, I'd leave that to you with your golden tongue, Mark.
Well, it, uh, the, the hard part is, is that the zoning allows it. It's 14 dash 10 dot.
I, I, I realize that, yeah.
So, um, uh, you know, it's difficult. I mean, it, it complies with zoning. Which means that it meets the comp plan, but, um.
I think it, zoning allows a special permit for a kennel.
Correct.
Sure one. It doesn't ensure one if it affects neighbors or, uh, the community, right?
Right, that's, that's the job of zoning.
Yeah, it just allows it. It doesn't, it doesn't, it's not a rubber stamp.
Right.
So I think we can input in like we do on anything else and say, this may be too much for this neighborhood. Let's bring it down to size.
I, I, I have no problem with, wait, Murph. I have no problem with saying something like, uh, you know. A, a, a lesser number would be more palatable in this type of neighborhood. And be, and would be consistent with the comprehensive plan, you know, but I, I. I, I wouldn't like to see 15 animals approved. And, uh, or.
If it was a farm or, or bigger farm or, you know.
Yeah.
Middle, maybe that would be, uh, 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 you could issue a special permit for more. But in situation.
This is Bob, this is Bob Murphy speaking. I, I, uh, I'm confused. I'm confused on this, uh. Because number one, it meets zoning. And how can?
It doesn't, it doesn't meet.
Zoning calls for a special use permit.
Right. Right, so.
Which is what the application is for.
So it's not a rubber stamp, we don't have to, it, it's not always issued.
Yeah, but what, what she has to do is go for a special usage permit, which would come from zoning, correct?
Right, correct. Why we're looking at it.
So, um. Said, we can't change the numbers, we can't set numbers, 10, 15, 20, we can't set numbers. We, we can't set the number, but we can suggest.
We can suggest the size.
Would be, uh, better for the neighborhood to say have a lesser number. They would have to set the number, but we could say that, um, we were concerned. And the only reason that she's approaching. Is because the police department has said to her that she needs to get a kennel, kennel permit. And that's for start, license, that's what started this whole, whole, uh, inquiry.
Yeah.
There's, there's been a complaint or two and then.
Yes, there has.
Said that, geez, if you had a kennel permit, this, this.
They could treat it differently.
Yeah.
They wouldn't have to rush down here, at which time I've heard my dogs barking and I've already gotten them in. You know, we're here with them.
If we make a motion, I mean, I would like to see somebody make a motion, Mark, you're pretty good at it. Um, I'd like to see that included, that, uh, a kennel. Uh, that she pursues a kennel license, is that what it's needed? Kennel license for?
Can, can I ask a question? I was, I, I didn't realize I was applying for a commercial kennel license. I thought I was applying for, in the, in what I had read, it was just considered a kennel license. And that's also, if I have a kennel license in the town. Then I can get a breeder's license from the state and then I am subject to state inspections. Which is fine with me, anyone, any one of you could come in here right now. You might see a lot of stuff, but you'll see healthy dogs kept well. And, um, and I would like that license because even though it does subject me to regulation. I think breeders should have, be able to have a breeder's license.
Does that mean then you become commercial?
No, it does not. It's a hobby breeder's license. A commercial license, I, you can become commercial, but I'm, at my size, I'm not considered a commercial breeder. It sounds like a lot of dogs, but I have my older dogs, my younger dogs. And then I keep, like, right now I'm at four breeding age. So like some, I'm sorry.
Sorry, but you sell those puppies, right?
I do sell puppies, yes.
So, let me just go back to, we, we're really are not, uh, in, in the, engaged in. The degree of, um, the size of what the special use permit or kennel is being asked for. So she's asking for a special use permit in order to have a kennel. And, and how does the comp plan look upon that? And so, from my perspective, as I said. The, the comp plan looks at economic development and supports small home businesses. So that, that's a, a plus for this operation. But at the same time, the comp plan expresses concern. For, uh, in a residential area, excessive noise and, uh. And the peaceful enjoyment of the residents, all right? And so that, it's up for the, the zoning board in the hearing. To understand the scale of what's being asked for, where the actual butters are. And the degree of appropriateness for the relief that they may or may not consider.
Mike, I, I, I totally agree with you, but I would let, like to let them know. While we know what that says, that we still have concerns, even though. And so that it is looked at.
Yep.
In other words. That's why we need Mark to make a nice motion. To outline our concerns. So that Wilma can have maybe eight to 10 dogs instead of 45.
That is the ideal number. Right now I do feel like I have, well, I have 11 and I don't really want 15 dogs, believe me.
And Wilma, you came up with that number, right?
Yeah.
I did because I felt like if I started at 10, I might not get the 10. So I put 15 so I could possibly get 10. It was just my way of thinking about it to be.
We're not getting rid of the dog.
No, I, I, I'm not getting rid, my husband's here, he's like, we're not getting rid of a dog. I don't want to risk having to not keep my dogs.
So, uh, okay, so I want another clarification. So you have 10, you have 10 adults?
I have 11 adults right now. They're not, some of them are not adults, some are eight month old puppies.
Okay, and so out of the 11, six are puppies?
No, out of the 11, um, the breakdown is four, what I would consider aged adults in between six and nine years old. There's four, the nine, nine and a half years old. Um, three are retired from breeding here after two to three litters and one was never bred. Then I have four young adults between four and a half and two and a half years old. That's the age group where I breed them.
Okay.
They, so I have four of those and then I have four youngsters that I'm bringing along.
And what I think you need to say is that you have one female with a litter of six.
I know, I, and I have one, that's at the end, one lit, so I have three youngsters that are possibly future breeding. The shows, there are, are not any shows this year or competitions because of COVID. So, um, I have held back three dogs. Um, one is 16 month old and two are seven month old. And then I have one dog. That has one litter of six pups. The, um. So I have 11 dogs and one litter of six puppies here.
It's 11 dogs and then a mother with six puppies?
Well, no, 10 dogs and a mother with six puppies.
I, I, my concern is that, um. The larger number would exceed the peaceful enjoyment for the neighbors. Uh, and I've kind of gotten used to the dogs myself. Uh, uh, to an extent, the, uh, I, I don't know that if, if they increase by a third that.
I, I won't be increasing them.
You know what I mean, Wilma, it's.
I know, I know, I know.
And so when, when it's put out there like that, uh. You, you know, and, and, and people are saying, geez, we can't, we can't control the number of dogs, then I, I don't think it fits in with the comp plan. If I think reduced and it was lesser, then I, I think it, I, I could support it. You know, I'd like if it stayed kind of where it was.
And that would be fine with me. I have no intentions of having more dogs than I have now.
You're gonna, you're gonna keep one of the puppies, is that right?
I'm thinking about it. I'm not really sure. Uh, this is the first time she's had puppies. She's four and a half. I waited to breed her. And, um, I do want to keep her bloodline, but I might, I will probably breed her again. And so. I, eventually I will keep a puppy from her. Um. I have a dog, like I was saying, one that's five and a half years old, that's done breeding. She was due to be spayed yesterday, but. She came, so she has a home slated, but I won't send her to her home till she's spayed. And so she'll be here a few more months, two more months probably. She has to, um. Do her season and then get, they can't be spayed during their season. It's not healthy.
Right.
Um, so one is leaving, possibly a second one. I also occasionally. Like I have these three youngsters, the 16 month old is staying, the two seven month olds, I may sell one of those at one year old. Because she, I don't know that she's going to be the dog I want her to be for the sheltering.
Because I'm, because I'm confused now, let me re- reiterate the number. There's 10 adults, one way or the other. Then there's one mother with six puppies, correct?
Yes, correct.
All right.
Just say there's a total of 17 dogs.
No, don't say there's 17.
Yeah, I mean, that's. You know, in a, in a residential neighborhood. Uh, I, I would really like to have a motion made that, that mentions an amount that we.
And I'm fine with that. I can agree on an amount. I'm pretty.
I, I, I don't think, I was, I was talking to Mark, I think.
I, I, I don't, I don't think we can stipulated amount. We can say we're concerned about the amount that was requested. And feel that the, in fact, I'll just, I'll make a motion and that we can.
Go ahead, do it, Mark. I understand.
Before you make a motion, Mark.
Okay.
I, I just want to clarify something in my own, my own head. Right now she is not breaking any zoning laws. She's not. She's not commercial in a residential area, that's correct?
Um.
This is, this is a hot. Yes and no. Z- zoning does allow kennels, okay? But the town also requires that kennels be licensed. And she's not, so she needs to apply for the special use permit so she can become licensed. Well, I understand. There must, there must be a number. That says that if I have a kennel for, for two dogs or one dog, I don't, I don't need to have a license, correct?
Yeah, I, I think you're only allowed so many dogs.
Do you know?
The county has no limit, that's.
I'd like to have the number on that. I mean, if, if I, if I had, cause I've had dogs. I mean, I've had huskies and I've had one or two huskies. If I had a kennel out back, um, I wouldn't have to have a license, would I? I mean, that's just to protect my dogs so they don't roam around. But now there must be, there must be a number.
Semantics, semantics.
Well, there must be a number that the zoning says that once you get over a certain number, it's now, you have to get a license for that kennel.
Can I say something? That there isn't. That's what I've been told. Because for 10 years, when I fought, bought my first breeding female. I tried to get a kennel license, find out what my limits were, and I've been told. That there were no limits on the amount of dogs you could own here. And that. I mean, I, I don't agree, but people do have a lot of dogs here. I mean, I'm not the only, I'm probably the only person with 11 dogs. But there might be one or two other people.
Correction, you have 17 dogs.
No, no, no. The puppies are all, the puppies don't even belong to me. They have deposits on them. They're leaving.
All right, so let, let me just, we have a question about kennels, all right?
Go get a puppy, will you? We'll show them a puppy.
In Peter's correspondence, he, he, he put the zoning definition in, but. So a kennel shall mean a commercial operation that A, provides food and shelter and care of dogs for purpose. Purposes not primarily related to medical care. The kennel may or may not be run by or associated with veterinarian. Or B engages in the breeding of dogs for sale. So that's how the town defines kennel.
Okay.
And you need a special use permit to do that.
That's why she needs a special permit, cause she's breeding dogs.
Right.
That's the bottom line on that. So she does need the per, the special usage permit. So let's, let Mark make a, a motion saying that. Uh, as we see it, she needs to get a special permit and that we would like to see in the future. Um, some number put on the amount of dogs that can be kept in a kennel. Um, that is not. In a residential area.
How, how often do the special use permits have to be renewed? Is that it yearly?
No.
No.
No, it's just, they're just, they're just issued for the property?
Uh, so long as the zoning board renders their decision that way, yes.
So it's issued for the property, would, would it survive the current owners?
Again, it would depend on how their decision is made.
Okay, how is it typically done?
Hasn't happened.
Well, it all, it also could be suspended, Carol, if, if there were violations. So, so it's not, it's not like it could go on forever just automatically. It, once it's a, once it's issued. Then there could be complaints which would cause it to be revoked or suspended or.
Right, it could be that it, that morphs into, uh, a boarding situation too, and not just a breeding. Uh, if it survives somehow the property and, and, uh, you know, then you have 15 dogs who. Know each other and then there will be, uh, noise issue and a noise problem.
That's right. So the, the special use permit, well, they're not all equal. So in this case. It's specifically relative to a permitted use in a residential zone. For a, a commercial use in a residential zone. And the zoning board, as Carol said, has the ability to qualify that. With terms of the, how they define the business or, or, or probably a term as well.
Right, Mark.
I wouldn't expect, I mean, I, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I, I was just gonna say, I have, there's not a kennel building here. It's not like the dogs are in my house.
Right.
So it's not like it's a, um, something that would. Like, no one's gonna buy this place because it's had 15 dogs in it. They might buy it because, not buy it because it's had 15.
Go ahead, Larry.
Um, so, um. If, and that's a good question, Wilma, if you sold it, Wilma, does the license get defunct?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I, I just really want the ability to keep my dogs and keep doing what I'm doing. I have quite a bit invested in them. Um. I can't really afford, if I, if I don't continue to breed them, I can't really support 11 dogs. Big do, I mean, I, I could, but I'm just saying that they need to generate their healthcare money, they need to generate. Big dog, I mean, I, I could, but I'm just saying that they need to generate their healthcare money, they need to generate some of their food money. Their competition money, you know, that they generate their own money, they have their own bank account. The puppy money goes in and it comes out.
Wilma, that sounds like a business.
Yeah.
But it's not, it's not a business unless you make money, and you can't make money.
When it walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, flies like a duck, it's not a gazelle.
I mean, I don't know what to say. I'll show you, I mean, I can, if zoning wants to see the account, they can see the account, they can see the ebb and flow. You know, it's not, uh, I don't have to file it on my taxes because it doesn't make money. Once, you know, one year I might make two thousand dollars, the next year I'm in the hole five thousand.
Yeah, I don't think this is about money. I, 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 I really, just, it's, it's about, uh, increasing. The noise and, and, uh, I think that's really, really it, uh.
I know, and I don't, I'm not going to be increasing the noise because I'm aging out some of my dogs. I am keeping some young ones, and like I say, the fifteen was. At one point, four years ago, I co-owned a couple of dogs in New York State, and they came here while my co-owner. Had some medical issues, and I did have fifteen dogs here for a while, for five months. And it was way too many dogs for me to take care of. It was a lot of dogs. Ten is the ideal number. Eight is the tipping point according to my husband, so.
You all see how that's worked, though.
So I'm fine about working with the numbers. I really, I don't, I, I'm not trying to increase what I'm doing. And if anything, I do want to make it a little more manageable, particularly. I know the noise is a, can be a lot sometimes, and I'm right in it, and yes, it is, it can be a lot. I mean, and I jokingly asked someone, you know, what's worse, the dogs barking or me yelling at the dogs? And they said, you yelling at the dogs.
I would say the dogs barking.
You say the dogs barking, okay, I'll yell at them. And we do try and get them in, and I've tried to be on top of it, it's. Um, I feel like.
Uh, look, this is Bob speaking, um, we're kind of going around and around here, um. If, if we, uh, send something off to the zoning board, well, is that something that we're looking for? To send something off to the zoning board saying that, that we've, we've heard the concerns from people and also. The proposal, what the people want to do with the breeding of their dogs. Um, and we would like it to be, uh, limited to a number, hopefully somewhere is around between, uh. Around ten dogs, uh, including puppies.
Well, you can't really.
Our job is to comment on the comp plan and the performance with the comp plan.
Yeah, and performance. I think we do the comp plan and just voice some concerns about the amount because. The amount of dogs that are allowed because of the, the, the residential neighborhood, that's all.
We cannot change the numbers or we cannot set the numbers. We can only say that we'd like to recommend it be somewhere around. Ten, ten dogs, um, in the area and on the property. The, the property's too something.
Do I go to the zoning board before the next meeting and talk to them about changing the numbers? Am I able to do that?
No, this is Carol, and I'm trying to interrupt before you get too far down a rabbit hole here. You, you do need to keep in sight that this is only to, to say whether or not her application that is already going before the zoning board. For a special use permit is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. There should be no more. Uh, amending of your application before zoning board because that's already been noticed. You need to, based on what is being heard tonight and what they have in their packets already, and what's been noticed to the butters already. Okay.
So then I would make.
With that, I think we need to address, uh, the noise as part of the comprehensive plan. And, and then the, the use of the, the kennel. You know, there's two elements, peaceful enjoyment and, uh, and especially use for allowed, special use. And I don't know how you assess those two things out without addressing the amount of, the amount of things making noise.
I make a motion that we send a letter to the zoning board saying that we understand that kennels are allowed under zoning. But based on the comprehensive plan, we have some concerns about the effect to the rural character of the neighborhood. To the peaceful enjoyment of the neighborhood and so forth. So we have concerns that maybe the number. Maybe larger than would be accepted by the neighborhood.
I'll second that.
Sal Malan, Marinosi accept, uh, was second.
Yep.
That sounds good.
Okay with that, Robert?
Really?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. So, Mark?
Aye.
Mike's aye. Bob?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Sal?
Aye.
And Richard?
Aye.
Thank you. You got more than you bargained for there, Wilma.
How about, Ki-, um. I.
No more discuss.
No more discussion, okay? Okay, can I talk, okay, I'll call, I'll, I'll ask a couple of questions tomorrow from Carol, okay?
Excellent.
Good enough. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
All right. You're welcome.
Good night.
Night.
So, uh, let's see, moving on to planning board business. And, uh, we have a bunch of, uh, discussion items that, um. Mark and I have talked about going over and, and getting everybody's input on. The first one, uh. Has to do with subdivision checklists and referral lists. And, uh, Mark put this on last month, so.
You know, part, part of the, the reason for it is, is that a checklist is supposed to be submitted with every application. We have not been coherent on that. Um, every once in a while, somebody submits one, but for the most part, they don't. Um, I feel it would expedite the process if we now start to require that. Uh, I mean, we'd have to do some kind of notification in the public, but also, um, the, part of the application is a referral sheet. Um, and on that referral sheet is where the police chief and the fire chief sign off. Um, if we require that, I think it's going to remedy some of the problems we've had with the fire chief where. He's had concerns, um, that haven't got aired, so, um, it, it is part of the application process. I think that, you know, uh, this also should be part of what we, you know, do something in the newspaper or something saying that. You know, as of January first, um, we'll require that all applications have a checklist. And the referral list completed, uh, upon, uh, proposal, but we can't do that without a vote, so we would need to take a vote.
So I think, uh, uh, I think this is a very good idea of Mark's. I think the current referral list calls for the police chief, the fire chief, the conservation commission and the town council.
Right.
And so, um, when we send that out, the, 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 the trick is, you know, historically. We get the applications in and we're always under pressure to get them on the agenda.
Yep.
Within, uh, it used to be five days, four days, you know, we pushed it back to two weeks. So I think one of the things we'd want to do would be able to send that out as soon as we received something. To those organizations.
No, no, that referral sheet is part of the application. The applicant or, or the representative of the applicant should be filling that out. Before he even submits it.
Oh, okay. So we're gonna, the, 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 I.
We, we used to do it all the time, I, and I don't know how it got stopped, but it did. And I think when we went to tracking sheets and everything, uh, somehow or other, we felt that we didn't need them, but we stopped requiring them. Uh, matter of fact, I think the last time we did was when Dick was still here.
Oh, I agree. I, I, I thought we were pretty good about it with, uh, major subdivisions.
Right.
And when they sort of went away, we, we got more casual. Um, but I didn't realize that the applicant had to do it, and if the applicant's gonna do it. And we're going to not, uh, hear the application. Until we, you know, until it's received back, I think we really, we need to focus on the. Um, police chief and fire chief. Uh, I'll let Carol speak this. She thinks it's really important that the town council sign off first. I think it's a, uh, it might be burdensome to, to the applicant to have to get a. Response from the conservation commission before they can submit their application.
Well. You know, I, I think, I think that the, the primary reason would be the police and fire. Um, there may be instances where we say that you need to go to town council. Or you need to go to the highway department for curb cuts or something like that. Um, but I, I, I'm thinking with, we're thinking primarily fire and police. Unless under special circumstances, it would require, you know, conservation commission or the, the, uh, town council.
Every, uh, every time I've made application in another town, it's always been the highway department. Fire and police. That's always, and if there was a town engineer. The town engineer usually took care of it for the highway department, but in this case, we don't have that, but. I, I would think that at least those three would be something that they could do, you know, more or less quickly. And then, uh, because, uh, almost, if a lot has frontage, it could impact every road. You know, that every lot is on.
But I, I think if we put a notification in the newspaper saying that. The, the referral sheet is required and the police and, and the fire have to sign off. Then, under special circumstances, we could say on the referral sheet, after we've reviewed it. That it needs to go before the town council, or it needs to go before the highway department, or it needs to go, um, before, uh, the, uh. Conservation commission.
Okay.
But as long as we spell out, I think in, in the announcement in the newspaper, that it will require police and fire. Then, you know, uh, if, if somebody comes before us and says, well, I think it might need town council, then you can always say, yes, you will, you're right, it does. But I, I can think of rare occasions that it would probably involve the town council, more likely maybe the conservation. What's that?
I would change the sheet, so we, we had one that was just police and fire. And, and in addition to your newspaper notice, we let all the, the surveyors and engineers know. That this is gonna be part of the application process.
Right.
We could have a, a little sign in the, uh, town clerk's office also. So a notice that in the future.
Well, I thought, Matt, Sal, I thought you'd volunteer to sit in her office and just inform them all as they come in.
They, they don't have coffee and donuts in there, I don't know. For me to do that, I need coffee and donuts. I dropped, I dropped the pastry on the floor, right, Carol?
Yes, you do.
Am I to, am I to understand that we already have, but we're not using it, uh, subdivision checklist and referral list? We already have it, we already have it, right? So why, why not make a motion tonight?
We could also modify the referral list.
All right, well, why don't we make a motion tonight to, to, uh, reinstate the subdivision checklist and referral list. Um, to the fire and with, with, um, review by the fire department and the police department. Um, along with their submitting, uh, their application to, uh, to the planning board.
Plus the checklist.
You know, I haven't seen the checklist, I'd like to.
I'll second that motion, Mark Katie.
Comment, I, I'd like to see that list so I could second it or not second it, uh. I have no idea.
It's already been seconded.
It, it's, it's in your, it's in your.
I'm, I'm going back to discussion.
Well, you can discuss after it's been seconded. Right.
You, you, uh, do you have subdivision regulations, Bob?
I don't have them here.
Okay.
Uh, but I'd like to see the checklist before we, we, we voted.
That's why we brought it up last, last month, so we could kind of look at it before this month, but I have, I have no problem tabling it. Until next month.
Now, let's, that, let's react on the, the motion and the second of the emotion, and we'll take a vote right now on that, and then. If that doesn't pass, we'll table it.
Okay.
I think it's good to have everybody understand what we're voting on.
I do too, I would table it.
And, and, yeah.
Yeah.
My second. All right, I'll redraw my first motion.
All right.
I make a motion that we table it until next month.
I'll second that.
I'll second that, all right.
All right, gotcha.
So, so everybody. Every, everybody, everybody needs to get their subdivision regulations out. And in the application for administrative minor and major, there are different checklists for each one.
Yep.
And while we're doing this, we'll, we'll probably, uh, find some other edits that we may want to. Change, like the, the size of, uh, one inch to two hundred, your, what on the plans, that we don't do anymore, anyway.
Are we gonna get, are we gonna get that? Like, maybe can we go in the town hall and get that, or what, where can we get it?
You don't have sub, subdivision regulations?
Yeah, I do, but, I mean, is it in that? I mean, I don't know.
It's in there, yeah.
It's in there.
All right. I'll, I'll dig it up, it's my file.
Okay.
The, the next thing. Okay, the next thing I'd like to discuss is, um, the zoning applications that we get. I would like. Permission to make a motion to send a letter to the zoning board requesting that they request the applicants. To supply them with more copies, so we get the same copies that go to the zoning board. Um, we're, we're now trying to take four or five sheets of paper and put them together to make a plan. Which doesn't have any match lines, which makes it difficult. Um, and I, I, I've already talked to Tac Eddie, and he said they are in the process of revising. Um, a lot of their regulations, so this would be a good time to submit it if the board thinks that that's, that's a good move.
Nice, great move.
Yeah.
Make that motion, clarify that.
I would, I would expand on that, if I might, that, that, um, that you, we always get a site plan, all right? Uh, you know, one of the things that was tricky with Wilma is she gave us a septic plan that was probably. Twenty years old, I don't know.
Yeah.
But it, it doesn't show any of the neighbors, and, and when we're trying to. Get a feel for the site and where the houses are nearby, it's terribly important to have a site plan.
Yes.
I agree.
Well, I thought the same thing with, with Mayor's application.
I noticed that, I noticed that we always get a list of the neighbors. But we never get a list of, we never get anything from the neighbors before we make our decisions.
Well, the neighbors don't have anything to do with the comprehensive plan.
Right.
That goes, that's zoning.
That goes to zoning, yeah.
That goes to zoning.
See, the comprehensive plan, it either meets it or it doesn't.
Yeah, right.
You know, and the, they, we're not supposed to be impacted by. Well, we were tonight with that, with the dog thing. I mean, there was a lot of discussion because there was concern about the noise. And in that neighborhood, and if there were a lot of letters, I mean. We probably would have, we probably would have, uh, utilized that information.
Yeah, there was one letter, but what I'm saying, I mean, it would be nice if somebody wants to put up a barn or something and, uh. They need a variance for it if we knew what the neighbors said, you know, it's blocking their view.
We can't take into consideration, that's, that's a consideration for zoning and zoning only. We, all we do is the comparison to the comp plan.
Yep.
All right, okay.
Okay.
I make a motion that we send a letter to the zoning board requesting that we get full-size copies. Of everything that the zoning board gets, including site plans, so we can better understand. The positioning of things that are being asked to be zoned differently.
I'll second it.
Sal, Marinosi seconded.
Yeah. Mark Katie votes.
In favor?
Mike votes in favor. Bob?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Sal? Sal?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you.
Ellen?
I know, I miss it. God.
Last thing is right of ways. Right of ways have been a thorn in the side for a long time. And we need to think of what we can do to ensure that they're built, if building is going on in that location. And if not, that somebody becomes responsible for ensuring it happens before any building takes place. We have right of ways that are asked, supposed to have cul-de-sacs that don't. We have right of ways that are supposed to have T-turnarounds that don't. We, we're now creating situations where fire trucks and ambulances are at risk to make emergency calls. And, you know, I, it, it basically says in the subdivision regulations without exactly saying it that the plan should never be filed or recorded until it is completed and inspected. And I've been called two or three times now to inspect a driveway or a laneway in Little Compton that leads to a west port. And I have to sign off on the Little Compton part in order for their plan to be approved. And I'm, I'm thinking that, that might not be a bad idea here, but I, I don't want to take the responsibility for the laneway or the right of way being built to code because, you know, I can't dig it up and take samples. But we should at least be able to verify that it's in existence and it meets what was drawn on the piece of paper.
Again, in other towns, what I'm obligated to do is before there's an approval on everything, or you can sell a lot, the highway department, the police department and the town engineer again, has to approve that before you can start selling lots. And the right of way has to be in place, the road's going to be built to spec, et cetera. So, I mean, if, if we're gonna do it, you know, and we have a highway department, we have a police department, a fire department, let them go to them and get a sign off.
Well, it's a little trickier here, Sal. And part of, I, I think, Mark's our first item there, if, if the police chief and the fire chief are involved upfront in the subdivision. Then, and we had, had Chief Petron to one of our meetings and we, we sort of broached this subject and then backed away from it. But because we, we do deal with a number of subdivisions that are never developed. And they're either for conservation purposes or evaluation purposes, and the town doesn't build the roads. So we need to ensure that the fire chief and the police have adequate, the, the access that's acceptable. And so if they're involved upfront, then, then on the, the backend, it seems to me, and, and it would probably get changed in the regulation somehow. But if you, you can't issue a building permit unless you have approved access to the building site. So i- if, if the building official is going to issue a building permit, then he needs to be able to inspect the road. And the fire chief needs to be able to expect, inspect the road so that it's acceptable access before a building permit is issued to create a residence.
What, what usually happens to is it's not even just a building permit. If, a lot of times, the house is being built while the road is being built. But certainly before a CFO is issued, before someone can live in that house. If, if something's being built or it can be occupied, then the road should be to spec. Or the road should be per, you know, the submission, if you will.
But we've had situations where it's, it's, oh, I'm going to get to it, you know, I don't want to put the road in and have it destroyed in the wet season. I'll finish it when I get the house done. And, and then it doesn't happen. And then the police chief's stuck.
So that's why we should, we should have, they don't get a CFO unless they have it done. And, and I don't think that's too much to ask because they're the ones that are developing the land.
Right.
You know, and if they're developing it and we're requiring them to do certain things, you remember, you know, the project over there where we had the cistern and the one, you know, the road going in and, and.
Baker Hill.
Baker Hill.
Baker Hill, I mean, everything had to be, I know that was a lot, but they had to do everything before they could sell lots. And, and, and I think that's the way it should be. I, I don't think we should have this. I mean, unless one person is dividing their one piece of land into two lots and his son's going into the right of way in the back. I don't have a problem with the highway department saying, you know, he put the access in. That's it. And, and, but if it's a subdivision, I mean, they're going to meet the regulation.
Sorry. Want to go into what we want to do with the subdivision checklist and referral list?
Yeah. Well, it, we're talking about a checklist going in. But, yeah, but how about afterwards?
Well, no, do the right of way up front. Do the right of way up front.
But Carol, did you have an input? I saw your, your mic come on. I, I thought maybe.
You heard me growl, did you?
No.
Well, many years ago, the town planning board used to hire us, an engineer who went out and did the inspections. It was Mr. Adam Baron. I mean, there are others that were used when he was no longer functioning, but you used to ask for performance bonds for the roads to be put in and you didn't really perform respond until the road was complete and that engineer signed off on it. Mainly that happens with more of your major subdivisions, not your administrative ones like Sal was mentioning.
Right.
But you already have the right to ask for all of that. It just part of your condition of your granting the approval for the subdivision to be allowed.
Right. And in, in the past, we have allowed certain engineers that engineer the job to, to give us that okay, that it's built to spec and so forth, and that it actually exists. But we've always only done that with major subdivisions, but some of the smaller subdivisions with the right of ways are as much of a problem as the majors were.
They're all going to be a problem eventually for someone. I mean, we won't even be here maybe, but someone will have the problem down the road. And, and, you know, that's a good point, down the road. But I, I, I think it's, it's up to us to make sure that that problem is handled now, when there, when there's a subdivision approved and utilized. I mean, if, if the lots are sold or people build on, what, whatever happens with, whether it's a minor subdivision or a major, a big subdivision, if we treat them the same or somewhat the same as far as protecting the town, because that's what we're doing. By protecting. You, you know, we protect all the residents that are around that, that road and that right of way. And, and we protect, we ma, we ensure that the fire department can get their trucks in there, rescue can get in there. You know, the road, the road is going to support vehicles that it's supposed to in the future. Because in the future, when roads get, eventually some roads may get accepted by the town and get improved. And you want to know that the base is in for that road, you know?
I, I make a motion that we table this until next month, so each of us can kind of look into it and search through our mind and see if we have any solutions that we can come up with that maybe give us the answer that we're looking for.
Good idea.
There's a second there.
I'll second it.
Sal Marinosi.
All right. So we'll call a vote on that, Mark?
In favor?
Mike's in favor. Bob?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Robert?
In favor.
Ellen? Yep. Sal?
Yes.
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Okay.
I make a motion that we file the correspondence that we didn't receive in the appropriate file.
Oh, you got one piece of correspondence?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, right, I'm sorry.
But it's, it's, it's an FYI, just something that had been sent to the council and we'll find out whether they send it to us or not. But we were copied in on it, so I pushed it along for your information.
Yeah, good information, by the way.
Okay.
You want, do you want a motion to accept it?
No, it's going to be filed. Mark made the motion to file it.
I make a motion to file it.
Okay. All those in favor? Or anybody opposed to filing?
No.
Good. All right.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Okay, anybody opposed to that?
Hey.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Have a nice evening.
Stay safe.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night, you're welcome.
Keep the pastry there, Carol.